Call the meeting to order. The City Council, City of Rialto, the Acting Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, the Rialto Utilities Authority of Rialto, Housing Authority will come to order at this time. We'll move into closed session.
Let me recognize, it's okay, let us recognize who's here. We have all council present and we have sitting in today for the city attorney, we have Assistant City Attorney Kristi Lopez sitting in for us. But let's reflect that council and the city manager present. Thank you.
Thank you. All members present for closed session, so at this time we'll call on the acting city attorney and give us a report and seeing that there's no audience present right now, I'll call on you.
We will now be going into closed session on anticipated litigation with respect to five different matters. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion? Do go into closed session?
No.
A motion has been made by Carla Perez, seconded by Edward Montoya. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.[131.88]
Your dashboard will also show your open invoices. You can make payments by adding them to your cart and making a payment with a credit card. If you have business licenses with the city, they will be listed at the bottom of the dashboard screen. My work is another way to see all of your associated records in a list view. It is sectioned out into permits or plans, inspections, and invoices. If you applied for a permit or plan at City Hall, you should see the record in this screen. If you have difficulty finding a particular record, you are able to filter and sort your records. There is even an option to export your records into a Microsoft Excel file. Providing the correct email address and contact information on your application is essential to being able to see your records in the online portal. Please contact the city if you are not seeing your applications in the online portal. If you want to see scheduled inspections, click on the Today's Inspections tab. If you would like to see upcoming scheduled inspections or past scheduled inspections, simply change your desired date. The Search Records tab allows you to search and view information available for permit, plan, licenses, and inspections records. You can search with record numbers, keywords, or partial descriptions. Click on the record number to see more details of the record. If you cannot locate the record you are looking for, please contact the city. The last tab is the Help tab, which is where you most likely found this video. Along with this introduction video, there will be other instruction videos and help guides available to you. If you need additional assistance, please contact the city. Now that we have gone over all of the menu options, let's quickly go over the six tiles that you see on the homepage. These offer you another way to quickly navigate the most frequently visited menu areas of Civic Access. This has been your introduction to Civic Access, the one-stop shop for development and permit application needs. If you need any additional assistance or information with Civic Access, please contact the city. Thanks for watching!
Recently, the Rialto City Clerk's Office, in partnership with Dawn's Bikes, hosted the Rialto on Wheels event. Attendees didn't let the wet weather get in the way.
It's kind of a celebration for everything that's bicycles. We thought, you know, for our 66th anniversary, we'd do something kind of cool. We partnered with the city and managed to put this whole thing together. So we have a bike rodeo for the little ones. They can go have a little obstacle course, learn about bike safety. We have a ride-out scheduled at noon. We also have a vintage BMX bike show. So basically, these are bikes from the old-school period, '50s, '60s, primarily '80s that'll be on display. And we're gonna have a competition for that. If you want to test ride an electric bike, you can do that. And we also have a freestyle show. These are guys that are like, almost like Olympic-level athletes from the X Games. They'll be putting on a show for us here shortly, and that's kind of what it's all about. A little something for everybody.
Rialto's youth was a large part of the event. From all ages, from young children just learning to ride to more experienced, but the focus remained on safety.
We are teaching kids bike safety and getting the community out to just have a good time for a common cause.
You know, it brings awareness on bicycle safety, brings the community out. They learn a lot, and hopefully they practice safety when they're out in the community with their bicycles.
You know, we have an opportunity to learn. And one of the things that they should know that a lot of us didn't know, you can't ride your bike on the sidewalk. I think the physical activity that a lot of the kids will do in riding a bike is great. I mean, if we're talking about obesity, well, this is one way you can say, "I'm gonna work out, ride my bike, and enjoy it." I have a bike, I ride my bike too as well. I should ride it more often, but I think it's very healthy and it's very good when my wife and I go out and ride the bike.
The Rialto City Clerk's Office partnered with local organizations such as the Rialto Police and Fire Unions, service clubs, and city council members to donate numerous new bikes to Rialto's youth.
My favorite thing about coming to events is seeing the smiles. The smiles that are created, the togetherness that comes out of events like this.
I love to meet the community members. You know, sometimes we're out at the meetings or, you know, we're at some of the functions, and we don't really get to engage as much as we'd like to. So being out at these events, we get to engage with the community, hear their, you know, thoughts and their concerns.
Welcome to Civic Access, the online customer access portal for the city of Rialto. This introduction will navigate you through the various online services and functions offered by the city of Rialto. As a guest visiting the site, you will be able to pay invoices, search for records, and view scheduled inspections. If you are a registered user, you will have access to see more information about your applications and records, and even apply for certain development applications. To log in, click Log In or Register in the top right corner of the page or with the tile in the center of the screen. If you have not registered for Civic Access, please create an account prior to logging in. After successfully logging in, you will see additional tabs and functionality. The first tab is the homepage. This will bring you back to the main page again from wherever you are in the website. The next tab is the Apply tab. This is where you can apply for available online permit, plan, and business license applications. After clicking Apply, you will be automatically redirected to the city's decision engine, which is a guided application to help you find the correct permit, plan, or business license application to apply for. The next tab is the Dashboard. In the Dashboard, you will be able to see the progress of your permit and plan applications that you submitted to the city. You will also be able to view all of your inspections and their associated statuses. Your dashboard will also show your open invoices. You can make payments by adding them to your cart and making a payment with a credit card. If you have business licenses with the city, they will be listed at the bottom of the dashboard screen. My work is another way to see all of your associated records in a list view. It is sectioned out into permits or plans, inspections, and invoices. If you applied for a permit or plan at City Hall, you should see the record in this screen. If you have difficulty finding a particular record, you are able to filter and sort your records. There is even an option to export your records into a Microsoft Excel file. Providing the correct email address and contact information on your application is essential to being able to see your records in the online portal. Please contact the city if you are not seeing your applications in the online portal. If you want to see scheduled inspections, click on the "Today's Inspections" tab. If you would like to see upcoming scheduled inspections or past scheduled inspections, simply change your desired date. The "Search Records" tab allows you to search and view information available for permit, plan, licenses, and inspections records. You can search with record numbers, keywords, or partial descriptions. Click on the record number to see more details of the record. If you cannot locate the record you are looking for, please contact the City. The last tab is the "Help" tab, which is where you most likely found this video. Along with this introduction video, there will be other instruction videos and help guides available to you. If you need additional assistance, please contact the City. Now that we have gone over all of the menu options, let's quickly go over the six tiles that you see on the homepage. These offer you another way to quickly navigate the most frequently visited menu areas of Civic Access. This has been your introduction to Civic Access, the one-stop shop for development and permit application needs. If you need any additional assistance or information with Civic Access, please contact the City. Thanks for watching!
The City of Rialto's Upgraded Permitting Center is a seamless, user-friendly experience for permit applications, business license requests, and secure online payments. Designed for efficiency, transparency, and convenience, this platform is built to service residents, contractors, and city staff alike. Everything you need, all in one place. Check out this introduction video to the new online permit center coming June 2nd.
Welcome to Civic Access, the online customer access portal for the City of Rialto. This introduction will navigate you through the various online services and functions offered by the City of Rialto. As a guest visiting the site, you will be able to pay invoices, search for records, and view scheduled inspections. If you are a registered user, you will have access to see more information about your applications and records, and even apply for certain development applications. To log in, click Log In or Register in the top right corner of the page, or with the tile in the center of the screen. If you have not registered for Civic Access, please create an account prior to logging in. After successfully logging in, you will see additional tabs and functionality. The first tab is the homepage. This will bring you back to the main page again from wherever you are in the website. The next tab is the Apply tab. This is where you can apply for available online permit, plan, and business license After clicking Apply, you will be automatically redirected to the city's decision engine, which is a guided application to help you find the correct permit, plan, or business license application to apply for. The next tab is the Dashboard. In the Dashboard, you will be able to see the progress of your permit and plan applications that you submitted to the city. You will also be able to view all of your inspections and their associated statuses. Your dashboard will also show your open invoices. You can make payments by adding them to your cart and making a payment with a credit card. If you have business licenses with the city, they will be listed at the bottom of the dashboard screen. My work is another way to see all of your associated records in a list view. It is sectioned out into permits or plans, inspections, and invoices. If you applied for a permit or plan at City Hall, you should see the record in this screen. If you have difficulty finding a particular record, you are able to filter and sort your records. There is even an option to export your records into a Microsoft Excel file. Providing the correct email address and contact information on your application is essential to being able to see your records in the online portal. Please contact the city if you are not seeing your applications in the online portal. If you want to see scheduled inspections, click on the Today's Inspections tab. If you would like to see upcoming scheduled inspections or past scheduled inspections, simply change your desired date. The Search Records tab allows you to search and view information available for permit, plan, licenses, and inspections records. You can search with record numbers, keywords, or partial descriptions. Click on the record number to see more details of the record. If you cannot locate the record you are looking for, please contact the city. The last tab is the Help tab, which is where you most likely found this video. Along with this introduction video, there will be other instruction videos and help guides available to you. If you need additional assistance, please contact the city. Now that we have gone over all of the menu options, let's quickly go over the six tiles that you see on the homepage. These offer you another way to quickly navigate the most frequently visited menu areas of Civic Access. This has been your introduction to Civic Access, the one-stop shop for development and permit application needs. If you need any additional assistance or information with Civic Access, please contact the city. Thanks for watching.
...we do something kind of cool. We partnered with the city and managed to put this whole thing together. So we have a bike rodeo for the little ones. They can go have a little obstacle course, learn about bike safety. We have a ride out scheduled at noon. We also have a vintage BMX bike show. So basically, these are bikes from the old school period, 50s, 60s, primarily 80s, that'll be on display, and we're gonna have a competition for that. If you want to test ride an electric bike, you can do that. And we also have a freestyle show. These are guys that are like, almost like Olympic-level athletes from the X Games. They'll be putting on a show for us here shortly. And that's kind of what it's all about, a little something for everybody.
Rialto's youth was a large part of the event. From all ages, from young children just learning to ride, to more experienced, but the focus remained on safety.
We are teaching kids bike safety and getting the community out to just have a good time for a common cause.
You know, it brings awareness on bicycle safety, brings the community out. They learn a lot, and hopefully they practice safety when they're out in the community with their bicycles.
You know, we have an opportunity to learn. And one of the things that they should know, that a lot of us didn't know, you can't ride your bike on the sidewalk. I think the physical activity that a lot of the kids will do in riding a bike is great. I mean, if we're talking about obesity, well, this is one way you can say, "I'm gonna work out, ride my bike, and enjoy it." I have a bike, I ride my bike too as well. I should ride it more often. But I think it's very healthy and it's very good when my wife and I go out and ride the bike.
The Rialto City Clerk's office partnered with local organizations such as the Rialto Police and Fire Unions, service clubs, and city council members to donate numerous new bikes to Rialto's youth.
My favorite thing about coming to events is seeing the smiles, the smiles that are created, the togetherness that comes out of events like this.
I love to meet the community members. You know, sometimes we're out at the meetings, or you know, we're at some of the functions, and we don't really get to engage as much as we'd like to. So being out at these events, we get to engage with the community, hear their, you know, thoughts and their concerns.
Welcome back to our show? What are we calling this? Vendor shout-outs, farmer's market, whatever the case is. If you have any suggestions, leave a comment down below. But we're here at the Rialto Certified Farmer's Market, and today, we will be talking to one of our vendors, who is Happy Hog Farms. They have been here with us for a very long time at the farmer's market, so let's go check them out. All right, guys, we are here in front of Happy Hog Farms booth. All right, let's get started. Are you ready?
Yeah.
So, can you tell me a little bit about your business?
Uh, we're local. We're in downtown Riverside, so we try to come out and try to support people for access to like, fresh fruit, organic. A lot of stuff that we sell right here, it's, we grow it, whether it's sugar canes, avocados, lime, I mean, the juice machine, that's oranges from Riverside County. Everything is local.
Do you have any bestsellers, or anything that customers love?
The guacamole, that's the best seller. My brother makes it. But a little bit of tomato, a little bit of lime, and there's a lot of guacamole, there's a lot of chunks of avocado, so it's really, really good. That's our best seller. And the tamales. Everything is freshly made, and they're Mexican tamales. People ask, "Are they, what kind are they?" Because some people use banana leaves, we use corn leaves. We have beef, pork, chicken, and cheese for the people that don't eat meat. And then we sell ceviche, fish, shrimp, vegan.
All right, do you have any fun or interesting facts about the business?
Well, what people don't really know, that we're only allowed to use local. So when we, like, when we press the juice, we're only allowed what's in season, you know? So sometimes it's not as sweet as it was, because we'll, once we run out of the navel, we'll start the Valencia, and it'll have to like, it'll get sweeter as the weeks go by. So people don't know that. So they'll think like, "Why aren't you just getting the, the sweetie that is, that's on right now?" But we don't get our stuff from like, the markets or the commercial. It's all locally farmed.
All right, well, thank you so much for joining us today. I appreciate it. All right, guys, well, that was Happy Hog Farms. We will see you guys next time. Bye.
Agency, the Rialto Utilities Authority, the Rialto Housing Authority will come to order at this point. I'll call for roll call.
Mayor Boz, Mayor Boz.
President.
Mayor Protem Scott.
President.
Councilmember Carisales.
President.
Councilmember Carla Perez.
President.
Councilmember Motoya.
President.
City Treasurer Ed Correa.
President.
Assistant City Attorney Kristi Lopez.
President.
City Manager Tanya Williams.
Thank you. At this time, then, we'll ask everybody to stand up for a pledge of allegiance, who will be led by Mayor Protem Ed Scott.
Please join me in the pledge to the flags of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll do the invocation by Thomas Mahut, Rialto First Assembly of God.
Please bow your heads. God our Father, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love and wisdom, who is with us now in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. Your grace has brought us here for this moment. We thank you for making each of us in this room in your own image, every person in the city of Rialto you made with dignity and worth. We thank you for calling us to be good stewards of your creation, and to love our neighbors as ourselves. Let us remember the words you gave today to the prophet Jeremiah in chapter 22 of his book, "The responsibility of all in government to defend the rights of the poor and needy. Isn't that what it means to know me?" declares the Lord. I thank you for your servants tonight, Lord, our mayor, Jobaca, our mayor Protem, and our city council members, our city manager, assistant city manager, and all of our staff of our city. I give thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us. Bless them with wisdom and guide them through every challenge our city faces today. We lift up our police, firefighters, emergency service workers. We pray for their safety and peace on our streets. We pray for the safety of our peace officers and calm over our city. Bless the families of our city and let those who seek goodness and light find hope in our city. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage, to do what is right for the good of all of our citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act in love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. We thank you again for all those who make this city work, that we call home, and make this city into such a wonderful place. Please bless the city of Rialto, in the name of Jesus, whose perfect love sets us free from all of our fears. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, we'll call the clerk to report the members that were in closed session. Roll call, before I call the city attorney.
Uh, we're gonna, yes, I call the roll, so if you want to ask the city attorney to give the report back for, she can go ahead, because I already done the roll call, so we can ask the city attorney to give a report from closed session.
Okay, will the city attorney give us the report in closed session?
Yes, so the city council met with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection D-2, as a result of significant exposure to litigation in, with relation to four workers' comps matters and a threat of litigation with respect to the Rialto Springs matter. At this time, there's no reportable action during, in terms of what happened at closed session.
Thank you. This, do we still need to clarify the attendance, or?
I call the roll, so we're all good. So we can go to your proclamations.
Okay, at this time, we'll get on to presentations and proclamation, but before we do, I just want to announce that on June 14th of this year, it'll be 250 years when the United States Army was established. So I'd like to have every veteran who has served in the Army stand up and be recognized since June 14th. Will be 250 years since they formed the United States Army. So members that are present, or in the audience that are here, that served in the Army, will be recognized, and individuals that are watching on TV, stand up too as well. We'd like to recognize you in celebrating 250 years in the military service in the Army. Thank you very much for your service. With that, I'd like to get on to the first item on here. Do we have the, from the library, summer reading program, Janet Monterosa? Could you come up and do the reading?
Hello? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for having me here today. This is Leslie Tepe, she is our regional manager, and I am Janet Monterosa, the branch manager at the Rialto Branch Library, right next door. We are from the San Bernardino County Public Library. I'm here to present our fun and educational summer reading program, Tales of Enchantment. It began on June 7th, and will be running until August 2nd. Each year, we present an educational entertaining program where children and families are encouraged to read for rewards. In doing this, the children will retain their reading skills acquired during the school year, helping prevent the summer slide, and be more prepared to start school in the fall. When adults participate in our summer reading program, they help model reading as a pleasurable activity and help build good reading habits. In addition, the program emphasizes the library's place in the community, a place where children and their families can enjoy themselves and gain a lifelong love of reading and learning. We use our online system called Beanstack, where all participants will log their reading, and this account is how the library helps re-dream all the rewards that they are earning. At this, as this is a free program, we have taken the liberty to create an account for the city of Rialto council members, all here today. And in doing so, our council members will receive our bags that we have presented here, each one for all of you. And inside, you will find our summer reading calendar program, where all of our events are taking place, as well as the how-to for reading, okay? And logging your books. You guys can start checking out your books and logging as soon as tomorrow. And then, all you need is one book a week for, as an adult, and that could be a picture book, it can be a graphic novel. And then for our children's and teen programs, we offer a few options such as five books per week, or 30 pages, or 30 minutes. Furthermore, now that you are all signed up and know about logging your books, you can come into the library anytime before the end of the summer reading program to collect all your rewards. You can start earning these incentives as soon as you complete your first book. You can also earn a ticket for every 30 books you check out. We have a big grand prize wagon that has a bunch of family fun stuff in it. And then, we hope we can help us encourage the other city of Rialto to sign up. Also, please tell all your families and friends about the summer reading program, because we're sure there's something for everyone to enjoy here at the library. Thank you for having us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what the library is doing in providing an opportunity for our community to learn, read, and advance, and obtain knowledge.
Thank you.
You want to give those to?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Next, we have a proclamation for the National Parks Recreation Month that'll be done by our council member Carla Perez.
We'd like to present proclamation number 10, Series 2025, where Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Rialto. And we would like to present that July, we would like to present July as Park and Recreation Month. And here to receive it is Cynthia, our Parks and Recs Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. On behalf of the Parks and Recreation and Community Services Department, I want to thank you for recognizing Parks and Recreation Month. I know we're a little bit early, but we've got a heavy calendar, and we want to make sure we're started on time. Your continued support and forward-thinking vision make it possible for us to create a safe, inclusive, and exciting spaces where our community can come together and thrive. Whether it's youth sports, senior activities, community events, or beautiful parks, everything we offer is a direct reflection of your commitment to improving the quality of life for Rialto residents. This summer, we're turning up the fun after the sun, and we'll be focusing our programming in the cooler evening hours to help families beat the heat while still enjoying everything Rialto Parks and Rec has to offer. Our efforts align directly with your strategic goals of promoting health and wellness, empowering our youth, and building strong community connections. And of course, none of this would be possible without the heart and hustle of our incredible Parks and Recreation team. I want to give a huge thank you to our staff for their dedication, creativity, and passion. They are truly the driving force behind everything that we do. Now to share a little sneak peek of what we have coming up in July, I'd like to invite Hacobal to share our calendar of events for our community.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I am a recreation programmer with the Parks and Rec Department. With 27 different events going on in the month of July, here are a few of our most highly anticipated activities. On July 1st, we'll have our second annual Rialto Mova Palooza. We invite members of the public to log their walking, swimming, and biking as part of the Healthy Rialto Initiative. On July 12th, we're having a silent disco at Joe Sampson Park, starting at 8:00 PM. Grab a pair of wireless headphones and jam out to some music. On July 14th, we're holding a glow-in-the-dark sports event at the pickleball, tennis, and basketball courts at Rialto City Park. The newly resurfaced courts will shine brightly, and we're bringing sports equipment out of glow. Join the fun, starting at 8:00 PM. On July 21st, Smooth Groove Band will be providing live entertainment at Rialto City Park, starting at 7:30. On July 31st, we're celebrating our amazing lifeguards by offering free recreation swim from 12 to 4:00 PM at the Tom Sawyer Pool. Our lifeguards keep the public safe at the city's only public pool. We will be giving the lifeguard's goodie bags and thank-you letters for all their hard work. Follow us on social media to see the calendar and individual event flyers for the entire month of July. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we really appreciate the Parks and Recreation for putting on a lot of activities throughout the year, not just for the month of July, but what it's done for our community, and we look forward to continuing supporting the Parks Recreation and making it available to our community, knowing they have a safe and a good place that they can enjoy and take their families. So thank you very much, Cynthia. Next, we'll move on to oral communications. Is there any oral communications?
I guess we have David Rodriguez.
David Rodriguez.
I don't see him present.
Is there any others?
We have Mr. Marco.
Buenas tardes, comisionados, Mr. Jobaca, and all the committee, all the committee of the city of Rialto. Como verán, hace un mes, vine a hacer una petición, y no tengo respuesta. Este, las personas que vinieron a pedir el parque, el Rialto Park, este, vinieron como, que era un club, pidiendo canchas para practicar, y ya tengo la evidencia que hicieron una liga de Rialto youth soccer.
Good afternoon, council. I made a petition, and in this petition, or the people that made the petition, rather, created a league at the Rialto Park Jerry Eves, where they were not supposed to.
También cuando yo hace 30 años vine a aplicar al parque, eran otros puntos, solamente era, me pedían a no-proper organization, los niños de Rialto, y pagar los fines de las canchas, y después fueron otras cosas que me están pidiendo que yo no puedo, yo no puedo, la verdad, completar.
So many years ago, the requirements to play in the parks were different, and in that time, I had provided everything that was supposed to be provided for the leagues and games to take place.
Yo les pedí una mediana, hace un mes que les pedí una mediana para explicar cómo es el proceso de la, de cómo se trabaja una liga de fútbol, y para explicarles bien y cómo está la situación, pero no, no tengo respuesta hasta ahorita.
A month ago, I asked for a meeting for an explanation as to how the league should be constructed, and I haven't gotten a response.
Así que, yo más, como les dije la vez anterior, yo quiero que sean las cosas justas, espero que sea justo, porque ellos pidieron para venir a entrenar, y como club, y ahí están pruebas, están ahí que hicieron una liga para jugar fútbol.
He would like for everything to be fair and just, and that the games that are played be club and not league games.
Así que, por favor, les pido una, 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 este, una oportunidad para explicarles. Si no me dan para atrás el parque, no hay ningún problema, pero quiero que, así que me están pidiendo los requisitos también, que tengan, que ustedes chequen, que el otro grupo también tenga los mismos requisitos que me están pidiendo a mí, porque no creo.
He's asking for an opportunity for him to plead his case. He says that if you don't give him the park back, that would be fine, but rather that the clubs that are participating are all being held to the same standard.
Estaba hablando con los coles de la ciudad, de la ciudad, los coles de Rialto, y voy a, dijeron que están dispuestos a venir a hablar, y yo le decía que diga la verdad, que lo que, cómo estoy trabajando, porque yo quiero limpiar mi imagen, me están dando una imagen que yo no soy. Yo tengo 30 años de experiencia, no tengo ningún problema hasta hace un año, dos años.
So the players are saying that they can come, and he's telling them not to come, because he's trying to clean up his image. He says, over the last 20 years, he's played a clean game.
Muchas gracias, esto.
Thank you, that's all.
Todo bien? Y con la ley que está ahí también, y con lo que necesitamos de ser igualmente para tratar a todos igualmente, no más a usted, pero igualmente a otras personas que deben pasar, hacer la misma cosa que quieren tener los soccer's huevos ahí. So, Cynthia, if you can, you can talk to him again. I know that we have regulations, and everybody has to comply with those kind of regulations, along with him or anyone else, and that there's, you know, I have a chance to repeat to him, that there's, everybody's treated equally and fairly. So, thank you.
We have a question.
Mm-hmm. Is there any other oral communication?
I have.
Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to the city council to consider removing or continuing any item on the agenda, consent items. Is there any items that anybody wished to pull? If not, do you have a comment? I'd like to call for a comment, not to pull, but to make a comment, and that's our Mayor Protem Ed Scott.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment on, well, first off, Madam City Clerk, is there anybody that asks to speak on any consent items?
Uh, no.
Okay. Just a comment on consent item E3, that the settlement related to Resolution 8359 includes a $325,000 payment to the city of Rialto, which is, as directed by the city council, to be used exclusively for either Birdsall Park or Ferguson Park at the discretion of the city council.
Thank you. With that, do I hear a motion to approve the consent item?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Ed Scott, Mayor Protem Ed Scott, seconded by Carla Perez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Any objections?
Motion carries.
We'll move on to tap one.
Um, we presented by Asha McRae. Thank you. I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. This public hearing is on the status of the city's vacant This public hearing is on the status of the city's vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and obstacles in the hiring process pursuant to Assembly Bill 2561. Since this is the first presentation of its kind, tonight I will provide a bit of background on the law, and as required, I will discuss our vacancy rates, the recruitment process, and any obstacles that we run into during our hiring practices, and finally, our efforts to attract and retain qualified candidates. So, Assembly Bill 2561 was built around a number of findings: that job vacancies in local government are widespread and a significant problem; that these vacancies impact public service delivery and subject employees to heavier workloads; and that there is a statewide interest in making sure that public agencies are staffed appropriately. So, out of these findings, legislation is made, and AB 2561 went into effect on January 1st, 2025, and it imposes new obligations on local government relating to tracking and presenting information on job vacancies. The mandate states that a public hearing must occur at least once per fiscal year prior to the adoption of the budget. The presentation must include any obstacles identified in the hiring process, as well as our efforts on recruitment and retention, and if a particular bargaining unit has a vacancy rate of at least 20% or higher, then additional information must be presented. And finally, as required, we notified all bargaining units of their opportunity to present. No employee organization opted to participate. So, this slide just basically shows that our vacancy rate utilizes our full-time positions, and that we have 491 full-time positions, and the pie chart just illustrates where these positions are allocated. So, this is the main slide that I will be discussing tonight. As required by law, the vacancies are broken down by bargaining unit to show where the majority of the vacancies lie. As of May 21st, 2025, the city has a total of 43 vacancies, which creates the vacancy rate of 8.8%. This is impressive for a number of reasons. First, it is rare to see a city of any meaningful size boast a vacancy rate of less than 10% in the post-pandemic era. I'd also like to draw your attention to the rows of Local 3688 and RPBA generals. These bargaining groups are in part our firefighters and police officers, respectively. Less than half of those current vacancies are of our sworn personnel. Comparatively, about three years ago, when I first started, we had about 40 vacancies just in the Police Department, and with other departments having similar struggles. The credit lies with the City Council, as you recognized then that this was a huge problem, and you allocated resources towards our Human Resources and Risk Management Department to assist us in bolstering our recruitment and retention efforts. You spearheaded the campaign on recruitment efforts by asking the Human Resources Department to report monthly on our new hires until we got to a place where we weren't in such dire straits. Credit also goes to Police Chief Kling and Fire Chief Parks, who made hiring a priority within our respective departments and assigned management teams to work closely with the Human Resources on their efforts. Within the Police Department, our, the Police Department has Sergeant Morales, Sergeant, I'm sorry, Officer Albert Solano, Jeanette Lopez, Olga Mata, and prior to Morales and Solano was Sergeant Zirkle and Lieutenant Pletto that work with the Human Resources Department. In the Fire Department, Human Resources works closely with Division Chief Paul Trufa and Battalion Chief Ryan Caffey. Credit also goes to the department heads around this table, who constantly work with Human Resources to bridge the vacancy gap. And finally, to my mighty Human Resources and Risk Management Team dedicated to the recruitment efforts, Diana Ontiveros and Beatrice Coens. What also makes this so remarkable is that in order to move the needle on the vacancy rate, you have to hire above your attrition rate. There's already a certain number of vacancies that need to be filled in any given year, and as people leave the city, the number of vacancies increase. In fiscal year 2024-25, we also had 19 new positions, which includes the reclassifications, but we hired 64 employees and had 36 promotions. So, when a position becomes vacant, our recruitment and onboarding process has five main steps. These steps are briefly illustrated in the infographic on this slide, sorry. The process in itself is governed by our personnel rules and policies. This ensures that it remains equitable and fair. The mandate requires that agencies identify obstacles in our hiring processes. Some of the obstacles identified are very broad, and some are very specific to our city. Some of the more broader shifts in the labor market have been coming for a long time, beginning with pension reform. While local government was once known to be competitive because of retirement, because of its retirement, with pension reform, it isn't as attractive as it once was. The gig economy, gaming, and AI have also pulled qualified candidates away from public sector labor market, and so we have this shrinking pool of qualified candidates that local agencies and surrounding cities are all competing for. With specialized positions that may also exist in the private sector, there's even more competition to attract and retain those employees, and the candidate pool is even smaller. Some of our challenges specific to the city are our recruitment timelines, and more recently, applicant communication was addressed. So, we've reacted to these challenges through a multi-pronged approach. Our focus continues to be broadening our digital and social media outreach. We also attend numerous job fairs in the surrounding areas and the career fairs at Rialto High School, Carter High School, and Slover Mountain High School. With our law enforcement, they attend hiring expos in the Orange, Riverside, Los Angeles, and San Bernardino Counties. We will continue to modify and revise our job specifications to eliminate outdated requirements and to keep current with industry standards. Internal audits are periodically conducted to ensure that the process is fair and in alignment with written rules while finding ways to streamline and modernize our practices. So, this concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Any questions in reference to the public hearing? Hearing none.
Madam City Clerk, anybody request?
No.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Ed Scott, seconded by Council Member Carla Perez. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Any discussion by members of the council in reference to Mayor Protem Ed Scott?
Good presentation, thank you. And actually, a great job in filling vacancies. I do have a couple of questions, though. You stated there were 19 new positions put into place between 2024 and 2025, correct?
19 new positions and reclassifications, yes.
And reclassifications?
Yes.
So, could you email or send the City Council a list of those reclassifications?
Yes.
And those positions that are new positions?
Yes, of course.
And one other question. In some departments, we have moved forward with new technology that reduces workload in some of the departments. ERP, for example, the new permitting system and whatnot. When those systems were put into place, was there any look at reduction of positions in those departments?
No, not at this time. We haven't looked into that. I'll have to look at the class specifications to determine what those positions actually do.
Okay. Could you send us a list or send us the job description of any position related to those new system installations so that we could also take a look at that for our budgeting purposes?
Of course.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I have a question, Chaima, in reference to the 43 vacancies. Is there a timetable that we have in terms of recruitment to fill these 43 vacancies that we have?
Yes. So, each of these vacancies are currently in some sort of the recruitment process. They're either open and being flown, or either reviewing the applications, they're either having the interviews being conducted, or they're part of the eligibility list. Just because they're saying that they're vacancies right now, it doesn't mean they're going to be, that we aren't moving to fill them. We're currently working on filling those positions.
And will the 43 vacancies be included in part of the 24-25 budget that we would be approving as well? Because I know it stated it would not impact the budget.
Right. It is part of the budgeted positions. So, these, when we fill vacancies that are only for the budgeted positions.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do we hear the motion?
Move approval.
Motion's been made for approval by Mayor Protem Ed Scott, seconded by Council Member Edward Montoya. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. We'll move to Tap Number 2.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call Amy Crowe to provide you with a brief presentation.
And this is in reference to a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. This evening, I am here to request that the City Council conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of territory into the Rialto Landscape and Lighting District Number 2. The city conditions development projects to construct Parkway and/or median landscape and install city streetlights. Annexation into the LMD 2 is a condition of the city's acceptance of any publicly maintained landscape and street lighting. The map here on the PowerPoint presentation shows the north of Foothill section of the city where this particular annexation, proposed annexation, lies, and then again, the south half of the city, south of Foothill. Staff currently recommends the following development project to be annexed into LMD 2. PPD 2021-0047 consists of 16 parcels proposed for the development of 429 single-family residential units on 26.6 acres of land located south of West Renaissance Parkway and west of North Ayala Drive. This is a protest ballot proceeding for the proposed levy of new assessments as described in the Engineers' Report included as Attachment 1. On May the 27th, 2025, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 8346, setting the public hearing to consider the annexation into Rialto Landscape and Lighting District Number 2 for this evening, June the 10th, 2025. Subsequently, the city mailed public notices and official ballots to the property owner on record. At this time, I would request that the City Council conduct the public hearing and take public testimony regarding the proposed annexation and tabulate the ballot received. Adopt Resolution 8360, declaring the results of the property owner protest ballot proceedings, and adopt Resolution 8361, confirming the Engineers' Report regarding the annexation of properties into Rialto Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number 2, levy the annual assessments, and order the levy and collection of assessments. This concludes my report, and representatives from Webb Municipal Finance and I are available to answer any questions.
Are there any one wishing to speak on this item? Has anybody requested?
No one has requested, sir.
Okay.
Move to close the public hearing?
Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Ed Scott to close the public hearing, seconded by Council Member Andy Cottasidis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. We'll move to Tap Number 3.
I have questions.
Questions, yeah.
Just a question. This is the Lennar Housing Project behind the Renaissance Shopping Center, correct?
That is correct.
Is that not a gated community?
That is a gated community, correct.
And are the streets not owned by the community that will reside there?
They are owned by the community that resides there.
So, why are, why are there streetlights and some of their landscaping in a landscape maintenance district?
This would be the perimeter landscape and lighting?
So, strictly the perimeter and the driveway up to the gate?
That's correct.
Do you know how many streetlights that is?
Can look here real quick, just a moment.
And the street, the streetlights within?
My apologies, Mayor Protem. We are not annexing streetlights into this community, it's just the landscaping.
I see the word "streetlights" in here. So, it's the landscaping only?
Correct.
And?
The perimeter landscaping.
Okay, so that's the drive up to the gate?
And the exterior perimeter.
And the exterior in front, and that's?
Yes.
It in its totality. And do you know what the annual fee will be on that?
The proposed annexation fee?
$21,395, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
I have a question, I guess, in reference to, you know, page 3 of the document where it says the goals and the policies. I have no problem with it. My question would be, when would the timetables be to implement these actions? Is there a timetable? Because it says, "Design, you know, streets gaps in Rialto to support enhanced city image, and design a place to live, work, and dine, require the screening, commercial," that's two, policy two, policy, then there's another policy, you know, one, two, three, four, and five?
These are goals for this specific item, Mayor, that where the adoption of this and annexation into LMD 2 meet council's goals, which were established some time ago. So, these aren't specific actions, it's how does this action align with council's goals?
I believe with the adoption of the general, the general, right?
Correct, 2010.
The goals that were adopted with that.
Correct.
Not necessarily the council goals.
Correct.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to?
Before we do that, Mayor, I need to open the ballot.
Okay.
For that, and then with the motion made for each of these, can I have the person who makes the motion to read the resolutions and what is for, once I open the ballot? Sir. The official ballot is for LMD 2 PPD 2021-0047. And the total assessment, refer to PN number, and the total assessment for PPD 2021-2047, I'm sorry, 2021-4407. It is in support for the property, sir. I don't see a PP number here to read. I don't see any other PPD numbers to read besides the 21.
There should only be one.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. If I could have the motion or read the?
Move approval of Resolution 8360, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Rialto, California, declaring the results of the property owner protest ballot proceedings conducted for the proposed levy of assessments related to the annexation or territories to the Rialto Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 2 commencing in fiscal year, fiscal year 2024 and 2025.
And the sec?
And approval of Resolution 8361, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Rialto, California, confirming the Engineers' Report regarding the annexation of territory to the Rialto Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number 2, the levy of the annual assessment described herein, and the assessment diagram connected therewith, and ordering the levy and collection of assessments commencing in fiscal year 2024, 2025 for said annexation.
Good. Motion has been made, the resolution has been read, and has been seconded by Andy Cottasidis. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. We'll move on to Tap 3.
Hello, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and council. Actually, I'd like to get Swag up here behind you so you can actually see who the group is. Come on up. I think it's important for council to actually see the people behind the work. So tab three is actually asking council to approve a one-year contract with the Social Work Action Group or Swag, approve a purchase order in the amount of seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and then authorize the city manager or her designated to execute the, the documents. So a little bit of background. In two thousand twenty, then police officer, but now Lieutenant Dewan Rice went to a conference and met the Social Work Action Group and brought the concept on how to address our homeless that was at the time about a hundred and sixty people in the city. So, you know, we, we always try to encourage our officers to bring in solutions. A lot of times, it's thought that it's always the, the executive staff that brings in the solutions to the problems. In this particular sense, it was a police officer at a conference that brought back Swag. And then, at the time, then council that was present, I brought before them a, a report requesting that we would take some funding out of recreation at the time of a grant and apply that money to bring in the Social Work Action Group. So that's how they all came about. We've had them for five years and they provided an extraordinary service to us. They deploy six outreach specialists weekly. That's seven days a week. There's two different teams. And they also do night deployments at the request of council over the last year. So just a little bit of what they've done, they've contacted eleven hundred and seventy-one homeless individuals who had substance abuse treatment, treatment issues. Ninety-six of those were substance abuse placements. They've contacted six hundred and thirty-two individuals who've had mental health service needs. They've also had four hundred and forty-one individuals that have exited the street. Additionally, three hundred and thirty-nine homeless individuals who received sheltered and some type of housing, a hundred and two that were placed into permanent housing plans. And again, at your direction and your vision, five years ago, it's just been a continual downturn in our numbers that are not verified by the police department, that are verified independently by the point in time count in the county of San Bernardino. This year is no different. We are lower than we have been. Remember, we started right around the one sixty range. We are now at fifty-two. What that means for us is something extremely significant, and I want to point that out. Right next door to us is the city of Colton. Colton has certainly appreciated the model that we have developed here in Rialto because Colton has now implemented Swag, or had implemented Swag and still is in that city, but they still have a hundred and seventy-one homeless individuals. The city of Fontana, right next door to us, to the west, has two hundred and seventy-one. I compliment San Bernardino because they have addressed their issues and they have now, for the first time in probably a decade or so, have decreased to under a thousand. And if council can actually look at this demographically, we are right in the middle of three cities that have a higher homeless ratio than, than we do, if you look at our size. So the relationship that we've had with Swag is, has been really pretty incredible, but it hasn't been without some type of issues. But I think the difference between us and other jurisdictions that have had a relationship and developed a relationship with Swag is that we work through those issues. We know that reports in other jurisdictions have talked about record-keeping issues, billing concerns, mileage calculation concerns and staffing concerns, and those are just to name a few. What we have implemented back starting in two thousand twenty was a auditing and cross-checking procedural implementation that our police management looks at consistently, consistently. In our city, our police department does not, and I want to emphasize, does not experience any of the issues that other jurisdictions seem to have with Swag. And I think that's just because of the ongoing communication and our effort in trying to not only better their organization, but they're bettering our organization through the reduction of our unsheltered populations. So I do want to emphasize that this contract includes transportation, which is the mileage costs that are in there in this contract, and in administrative costs. The administrative costs have been somewhat of a concern because it's a five percent tack-on. And I think that it's very important for council to know that Rialto has been the only city that has not been taxed with this five percent increase in administrative fees that other cities have done. And we have saved this year alone over fifty thousand dollars in, in that five percent savings. However, because the Social Work Action Group is an agency, nonprofit, that looks for other types of contracts to address homelessness in other communities, starting July first of two thousand twenty-five, to be fair, the city of Rialto will be charged the five percent that's included in every other contract that they have that's going in other jurisdictions. And I think that's just from a fairness standpoint. But I want to keep in mind for, at least to the council, that, that the Social Work Action Group alone this year has saved us over fifty thousand dollars. The administrative costs, this five percent includes data gathering, gives us a lot of factual information. It also offsets their insurance costs. It helps pay for a one million dollar liability policy. Other jurisdictions have a two million dollar policy limit or requirement. Our procurement and purchasing division here and our city policy is only one million at this point. And also workers' compensation costs, along with other state of California licensing necessities. So there is a thirty-four thousand dollar increase in this year's fee from last year's. That is just due to the cost of operations and increased business costs. I also want to indicate that there is probably some money that's going to be left over this year to the tune of about sixty thousand dollars that's just going to be actually going back into the general fund. And that's mainly because of staffing issues that Swag has had, just like the report that we had in, in tab one, where it talks about our, our challenges in staffing. It's no different in the private sector. Per municipal code two point four eight, two eight zero, it's been dedicated, at least determined and approved by council previously as a sole source. And in your report, staff report, it contains other facts that may be interesting to you, or I can speak to those. I have Swag here with me. Aaron Petroff is the, the director and owner of the nonprofit, and we can answer any questions that you have. And I would just ask council to approve the, the request for seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five fifty. The program account numbers are in your report, along with the vendor disclosure forms. City attorneys approve this as deformed, and I can answer your questions.
I make a motion to approve?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you're familiar with, well, let, let me get back to the, the counts. We're at fifty-three right now, and I, I commend you for, you and your staff and Swag for getting us to that, that point. Fifty-two, I guess, is the right number.
Yes, sir.
But my question is, I think we all know that there's also transient people coming through the city. So when I look at the numbers of, of who you've dealt with, it seems relatively high compared to the fifty-two. I assume that's because it's transient individuals, correct?
You're, you're a hundred percent correct.
And, and do you have any idea at any one time how many transients are in the city?
That number's going to fluctuate. I can, you know, talk to Aaron's crew real quick to get a date or at least a number. But keep in mind, there's a lot of factors with that. The primarily, I think you identified the word transient, so it's not permanent. So if the individual decides to come through the city of Rialto on the way to some other known destination and we happen to stop and contact them, we still offer all the services. And I would presume, or at least estimate, how many on a given day for transient populations that we, we deal with? Because on average, we have to deal with over twenty contacts just to get somebody into our services per unsheltered individual.
That's, that's a tough question to, to answer because we, we're not always tracking that data. You know, we, we have a good idea. We know most everybody who's on the streets here in Rialto. And so one of the first things, if we see somebody new we haven't dealt with and, and the officers, you know, follow the same sort of routine, you know, if somebody just shows up and says, hey, I'm from San Bernardino, we're not, you know, we're trying to help somebody get somewhere else. We're not going to spend hours and hours and hours with somebody. We're going to, you know, to establish their residency or homeless residency in Rialto. So those individuals, we're looking to help reconnect them to, you know, wherever they came from. So, and, and the number here wouldn't be any different than any other city that we see because they are transient individuals. So, I mean, I literally would have to take that number and divide it by days, and that's the number of people that we've come across. I've never examined it backwards that way, but it's no different here. I definitely credit, you know, it's, it's Rialto Police Department who has their finger on the pulse of that. They're not letting people become comfortable, whereas other municipalities take a very different approach, and it's a hands-off approach, and it's, you know, let's create housing and house you there, and you build it, they will come. And so definitely credit Rialto PD for keeping the numbers low.
Okay. And a couple other questions, Chief. One is nighttime. How, how much work are we actually doing at night? And I fully understand, as I hope the community would, that there are certain places in the city where homeless may be prevalent or exist that you certainly don't want to go into at nighttime. So how often are we out at night doing anything? Or is that mostly our police officers that deal with that?
No, sir. We actually have a team. We fluctuate that team until eight o'clock at night. You know, right now, it's daytime, so that number, that number of actual folks out contacting people, because we know that, you know, homelessness actually doesn't stop at six o'clock. So seven days a week, we fluctuate that number depending on what our staffing looks like. So I will tell you that I will not, in all consciousness, allow that this team behind me, they go into any type of unsafe circumstances regardless of daytime, nighttime, primarily in the evenings. We do run into a lot of violence in the riverbeds, and I won't allow them to, for their safety, because they're unarmed, to go into those areas. So eight o'clock is the cutoff, and then our officers, if we have to go into those, will take care of that afterwards.
Okay. And my last question is, you're familiar with the Rialto, the My Rialto app, which allows individuals to report things. How many reports of homeless individuals have you received on this app?
That's a great question. I don't have that information, but I can actually give that report to you, sir.
Could you give that to us?
I certainly will.
And my second comment is, besides finding this app not very friendly to use, because you sometimes, if you report things, you don't really know that you've reported them. So it certainly needs some work, city manager. But somebody decided to use the term unhoused on here instead of homeless. And I'm just not sure that everybody in the community equates one with the other. So I, I'm wondering if that's the proper word to have on the app, or should we just be realistic here and say homeless?
I will work with the assistant city manager to get the correct term. Right now, it's unsheltered. It was homeless. It was unhoused. It's, it was homeless.
It's, I'm looking at it now. It's currently unhoused.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll work with them to get, get our third definition.
And I want the community to use these, this app and report things, and that clearly is the easiest way to report somebody living in one of our neighborhoods, because they do come into the neighborhoods and live in the neighborhoods. And this is really probably the easiest and most effective way. My, my last question to this, does this, if this gets reported on here, does it come directly to the police department, or does it also go to Swag?
It comes right to the PD, and it goes right to Community Services Bureau, which they work out of.
And, and then goes over to them?
Yeah, and I just want you to know the setup. That new police facility that you've all approved, to show you the interaction with this group and our Community Service Bureau, they actually are housed with the Community Services Team.
Okay.
Which is the way it was in the trailers until we moved them. But the reintegration will happen in November when we move into the new building.
Okay. And, and my, my final comment is, I, I want to thank each and every one of you for the job you do for our city. It's a job that not very many people would want to do. So we appreciate what you're doing, and we want to thank you for what you're doing. And also your officers. Is that Martinez back there?
Mike, yeah.
Martinez, thank you for your, your assistance, and Captain also. But I appreciate everything the Rialto Police Department does and Swag to deal with really a tragic issue that's in our community and, and every other community around us. And I will second the mayor's motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Ed Scott that, that indicated that an app should be there, because we get a lot of calls, and it would be a lot better if the calls came in there versus coming back to us and then we contacting you and saying, hey, there's a homeless person that's out in the following street or the following sidewalk, you know. So having a good app that upstayed it would be good. So with that, a motion's been made. Second, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Appreciate your support and, and also just the ability for us to do our job. I also have tab four. This one's hopefully a little bit simpler, because I've been before you before with this.
Move for approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion been made by Andy Cottasidis, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ed Scott. Any discussion? Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Thank you, council.
Oh, but also?
Any opposition?
No, not an opposition, but I want to make sure that we read the resolution that was in the, if the, if the person who made the motion can just read the resolution for me. Thank you.
Can you put your mic on, please?
Rialto City Council adopt a budget resolution number eighty-three sixty-two, amending the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget, recognizing revenue from monies not claimed within sixty days of the first notice to become property of the city. Appropriate, appropriate budget in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine point forty-four for the police department's information technology infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Okay, motion's been made. I guess we've all voted on it? Okay. Tab number five?
Good evening. Tab five will be presented by Scott Williams, our Director of Finance.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. This evening, we have for the council's review and consideration, a request for authorization of the issuance of the proposed CFD Rialto Communities Facilities District two thousand twenty dash one El Rancho Verde, and this is special tax bond series two thousand twenty-five for the issuance of bonds not to exceed twenty-one million. Now, by way of review, the council formed CFD two thousand twenty dash one in July of that year, and it was modified two years later to extend the boundaries and increase the maximum indebtedness. And with all CFDs, the purpose of this one is to provide financing for public improvements. So that is in the form of capital facilities for both the, the city as well as fees and facilities and fees for West Valley Water District. The CFD comprised seven hundred seventy-six detached single-family homes across six neighborhoods with three hundred fifty-five remaining. The first round of the special tax series two thousand twenty-three was issued in October that year. And what is being proposed this evening is the final round of special tax bonds series two thousand twenty-five, not to exceed twenty-one million, and that is roughly at parity with the twenty-three bonds. So outside of refunding, this is the final issuance. And the proceeds will be used for the same purposes, capital facilities for the city and the water district, debt service reserve, and the cost of issuance. Debt service for the, both two thousand twenty-three and twenty-five is paid by a special levy on real property within the boundaries of that CFD. It is recommended that the council approve authorizing the issuance of the bonds amount not to exceed two, twenty-one million, as well as first supplemental fiscal agent agreement and other compliance documents such as continuing disclosure. And to authorize officers of the city to execute all documents, appropriate action, as well as appropriate actions. So that concludes our report, and we do have the financing team with us this evening. Should the council have any questions?
Are there any questions by member of the council?
I was just wondering if the city treasurer has any comments?
The?
Do you have any comments?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem, I should have your comments.
No.
No expertise for us?
I'm sorry?
No expertise for us?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of Resolution Eighty-three Sixty- Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of resolution 8363, resolution of the City Council of the City of Rialto, acting as the legislative body of the City of Rialto Community Facilities District number 2020-1 El Rancho Verde, authorizing the issuance of the City of Rialto Community Facilities District number 2021-1 El Rancho Verde Special Tax Bonds Series 2025 in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $21 million, authorizing the execution and delivery of the first supplemental fiscal agent agreement, a continuing disclosure agreement, and a bond purchase agreement approving a preliminary official statement and final official statement, and authorizing certain and other actions in connection therewith.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Edward Montoya. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. We'll move on to tab six.
Did he vote?
No, he made the motion. Edward.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and members of council. Tonight's staff is requesting the council's approval to award two professional service agreements, each in the amount of $600,000 for on-call plan check services. One agreement with Engineering Resources of Southern California and the other with Willdan Engineering. One of the many critical functions of the Public Works Department is reviewing technical plans and studies for private development projects throughout the city. Developers must submit detailed improvement plans for items such as grading, street work, drainage systems, and traffic signals. These plans require a thorough technical review to ensure compliance with various regulations. On May 15th, staff released a request for qualifications, which closed on June 3rd. Each submission was evaluated and Engineering Resources of Southern California and Willdan Engineering ranked the highest, demonstrating expertise and capacity needed to support the development review process effectively. Having two qualified firms ensures that the city can handle varying workloads efficiently and maintain service levels even when one firm may be at capacity. This approach provides flexibility and helps the city stay responsive to its development community. Funding for these agreements is included in the proposed fiscal year 2526 budget.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Okay, motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
I have questions.
Okay. I'll second it and then we'll get any questions. Motion's been made by Carla Perez, seconded by the mayor. At this point, we'll call on Mayor Protem Ed Scott with the question.
As you well know, where I'm at with outside contracts. And yet I continue to see outside contracts. So HR did a presentation today. I would like to know how many vacancies you have in your department.
Off the top of my head, I have three. And what are those positions? A street maintenance worker, a facility maintenance worker, and a senior engineer.
Okay. So of this work, would any of those individuals be doing this work?
They could assist. Before bringing this to council, I looked at the different positions that would fill these contracts. And as tab item pointed out, the recruitment process and retention for more of these technical job positions are somewhat difficult. So looking at this, these contracts, I would assume three to four civil engineers, one to two structural engineers, one traffic engineer, a geotechnical engineer, two to three engineering techs, and probably a senior plan checker. Those total around $1.7 million just for staff. So with that count, using this and using on-call services, we have the ability to fluctuate as needs and the demand comes in. So.
Well, again, I'm not in favor of on-call services.
Correct.
I think we should have employees working in the city and they should be getting paid to do the work in the city. I'm not, I'm not saying that you would need all of those individuals, because I really don't know that. But I think we ought to make at least an effort to do some of the plan check stuff in-house. We don't seem to do any of that anymore. So small projects are taking forever. And the number one complaint I'm hearing out of our developers and contractors is how long it takes projects to get through your shop. So I would like, in this next budget process, to take a look at, as to whether or not it's feasible or makes any sense to hire some in-house staff to do some of this work at least. Some of the specialized work, I understand, it probably makes more sense to have it outside. But I'm just concerned, $600,000 each, that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money going outside of our city, very frankly.
Do we need further discussion?
Roll call.
All right, we do roll call.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Baca.
Aye.
Councilmember Carrasellas.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scott.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
We'll move on to tab number seven.
Move on to tab number seven?
Yes. Good evening. Tab seven is a request to award a contract for state lobbying services to Cal Advocacy for a two-year term for $144,000. Daniel Sanchez with the firm is here and available to answer any questions for the council.
Are there any questions, are there any questions by member of the council? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I have questions.
Okay.
Nice try. Is he going to do a presentation at all? Are we going to do a presentation? No presentation. We're hiring a lobbyist, correct?
Correct. Daniel Sanchez with California Advocacy.
And there's no presentation for it?
I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, here's my first question. There's five of us set up here. And previous lobbyists that we've had have never communicated with at least four of us. And I'm referring to a previous mayor sitting up here. But we never heard a word from the lobbyists in the past. We do from federal, but not from the state lobbyists. So I want to know what your process is going to be to communicate with each council member up here and what your plan is to carry forward, what consensus from the entire city council.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mayor, council members, Daniel Sanchez with California Advocacy. We are a premier and proudly Latina-owned lobbying firm in Sacramento. We are about 200 steps away from the state capitol. California Advocacy has five registered lobbyists at their disposal. And on a personal note, I'm actually from the city of Rialto. I went to Carter High School in 2007. My wife went to Carter High School as well. My folks still live here. My in-laws still here, live here. So we have a vested interest in the progress of City of Rialto. The work is done in Sacramento. And Mayor Protem, to answer your question in regards to the communication, we have an open dialogue process. It's really at the direction of the client. We have over 30 clients in local government, nonprofits, companies, and we really serve at the direction of the city council, the manager, whatever the direction is from you all. And we have a daily email update that we provide to folks who are interested in understanding the latest policy discussions going on in Sacramento. Sacramento is a day-to-day type of news place where, you know, you want to ensure that clients are privy to that information. You know, what's top of mind of lawmakers. So in regards to the communication component, we communicate on a daily basis. We have weekly check-ins with designated individuals for each client. And we really pride ourselves in having an open dialogue at the full discretion of the council or city manager.
That's, that's good to hear. There's too many things that go through Sacramento that sometimes, as a city, we don't agree with. And our voices need to be heard. So I hope that you reach out to each and every one of us, get our thoughts on the state of the state and what we're looking for to make our community better. And really work with us, because we have not had that in a long time. We probably haven't had it since, probably in 15 or 20 years.
Well, we're going to change that.
So I really hope so. And I'm glad to see that you're a Rialto person. It's nice to have somebody from our hometown, because you kind of already know what we need.
Oh, yeah.
So appreciate it. Welcome aboard. And did you make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion or comment?
Yes. So understanding there's a lot of changes that are happening literally on a weekly basis, what are your, what are some of your first goals for the first few months that you have here outlined already for the city of Rialto, or at least?
You know, great question, council member. It's really dependent on the direction of the client. Everyone has different needs. You know, some clients hire us for specific projects, you know, when it comes to funding, a specific project, looking for grant opportunities on the state side, and maybe some that qualify with federal funding that the state also works with. So it's really dependent. So what we do is we, we like to get introductory meetings going on right out the gate, you know, and then connecting those opportunities and goals with the current legislative cycle, with the current grant cycle. And also advising clients in regards to how we could best connect them to opportunities that we see in the horizon when it comes to the public policy space. So it's really dependent on the specific project and client.
Great. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment in reference to this lobbying firm, is that they have a relationship also with two of our representatives, which is very important. That's Senator Alouise and Assemblyman James Ramos, which is very important as we look at moving the city forward, not only in terms of the kind of grants that we may want and support, or the kind of legislation that may be impacting us in the future too as well. They will be able to communicate with you in terms of where we want to go or where we need you to lobby for us in those areas. So with that, motion's been made.
Can I make one other comment?
Sure.
And we would also like you to work with the city clerk on, on issues that she has that we certainly support.
Definitely.
Thank you.
At your direction.
Hearing no further comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Move on to tab number eight.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. That's my closing announcement tonight.
Tab eight is a request for city council to approve the purchase of two Smeal Type 1 police, I mean, fire engines with equipment modifications and installation.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made by Andy Caddaseta, seconded by Mayor Protem Ed Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you very much and congratulations in the two new fires, engines that we'll be getting.
With that, that concludes the items for the day. We'll move on to, did you ask him if they're going to be built by Tonka? Will those be built by Tonka, like the ambulances?
Now, we'll move on to council's, mayor's report and council's report. We'll start off with the council members first. I'll start with my far left and then go to my right. Or go to this side. No, I didn't want to say it to the right. And then go to this side of the aisle.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Carla Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to wish a happy belated birthday to our councilman, Edward Montoya. He celebrated a birthday about a week ago.
65.
26th birthday.
He can barely rent a car. And also, you know, with the weather heating up, I'd like to remind our community that we do have cooling centers within the city. The Grace Spark Senior Center, Carl Johnson Center, and the Rialto Library. It's not officially summer, but it sure feels like it here. So stay cool out there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Ed Scott?
Thank you. Last night, the mayor and I did the first round of interviews for applications on the planning commission. We have another round tomorrow night. And then we'll be bringing forward our recommendations to the city council for their review and approval, or disapproval. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Nothing to report?
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilman Randy Caddaseta. I, I have something to report. I'd like to, first of all, start to attend. I attended Hattie Ench, you know, who passed away. She was 90 years of age. She was a pillar in our area, very involved in almost every kind of activity in the city of Rialto. So I attended her funeral last week, last Thursday. So our condolences again to the family members. And I know that she's in heaven organizing everyone in that area and getting everybody involved. And maybe she's even got a Martin Luther King event started in that area as well. Next, I'd like to report that I attended Rialto Unified School District's graduation. There was four graduation for different high schools. It was held at the Ontario Sports Complex. In attendance also at all four graduations was Edward Montoya. He attended all four. We started at, we were there since, I believe, 7:15 and ended up leaving around almost 8:30 or 8:45, somewhere in there, where we concluded with all the graduations of, of the students that graduated from the different high schools. Congratulations to all of the students that graduated and best wishes in their future endeavors and hopefully they pursue further education. Next, I attended the opening ceremonies for Handel's Ice Cream. We do have that now at the Radisson. So there was, I know that two of our council members also attended. I'd like to mention their names.
Renaissance.
At the Renaissance.
Not the Radisson.
No, not the Radisson, Renaissance. The Renaissance. Did I say Radisson?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, maybe we should have a Radisson's.
I don't want your wife to think you go to the Radisson.
No, no, no. No, no. I think we need a hotel. Maybe that's what I'm, you know, I had in mind, you know, having a major hotel in the area. That's what came out of my mind. So, yeah. But I'm sure you would support a major hotel in our area as well.
Definitely.
We attended the, the ice cream opening ceremonies and Carla Perez was in attendance. And at that one, also Ed Montoya was in attendance, along with our city manager and, and also our community director, Christina Taylor, right?
City Clerk.
And the city clerk was present as well. And that's Barbara McGee.
Sullivan.
Hmm?
And Tim Sullivan.
And Tim Sullivan, you know, was present. So thank you very much for attending. Then on, on Friday and Saturday, we had the Rotary Club 30th Annual Cruise on 66 Foothill Boulevard Show and Shine. And on Riverside, we had the car displays with many of the cars that participated here in the city of Rialto. We look forward to having it in the future, but also looking towards promoting it and having more community involvement from our communities attend these events. And I want to thank the police department and the fire department for being there, not only in these events, but any and all events that we have held in the city of Rialto, to make our city a lot safer. So thank you very much. And that concludes my report. So we'll start now with reports from our city clerk, Barbara McGee.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem and staff. Tomorrow, we have our men's health fair at Rialto Certified Farmer's Market. We're really looking for blood donations from anyone, anyone that you know that would like to donate. We do have a little bit of a quota that we need to meet. So we'd be very thankful to see all blood donations there. We're trying to make prevention a priority. So we have free health screenings and free dental work going on. If you would like to take part in that, take an early signup at the market. The event will begin at market time at 10 and run until 2, although some of those health-related services will run well after the event, because we sort of pay for the whole thing. So we're going to schedule them all the way out. Yes. So come out, have fun, check us out. We'd love to see the council there. We know we'll see some of our regulars and we hope to see everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. That conclude your report, Barbara? That concludes the report of Barbara McGee, the city clerk. Next, I'd like to call on our city treasurer, Edward Carrillo.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Let's see, I attended the cruise night, that's always a good time, and we had great weather. I also celebrated my 74th birthday there, and also attended on Saturday where you and Mr. Montoya was at the Run Which You Brung. Had a good time, so, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on our city manager, Tanya Williams.
No report from me this evening, mayor, thank you.
Next, I'll call on our acting city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing to report.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on our police chief, Mark Clean.
I'm going to get them all warmed up for you. Mayor, Mayor Protem and the council, make it quick tonight, but I do want to kind of emphasize what you've all allowed me to do, and that's develop. And, you know, some of the unknowns of our department who are now readily becoming available to actually bring forward ideas with just a few internal changes. So here's an example. Lieutenant Polito noticed that some elderly folks in our community were getting victimized by scams to some considerable amount of tens of thousands of dollars. So he put out a informational email to our department that was picked up by our investigative lieutenant, and it wasn't so much the fact that we were going to be able to find this scamster, but what the lieutenant spearheaded was sending two new detectives and the importance of community engagement, and took, didn't go to the community team, he actually sent detectives to all of our elderly homes and some trailer parks. And we met last week with 136 people, and it's unfortunate, because one location, we could not get them to commit or even respond to our request. And while we were educating the other 136 people at all these other locations about scams, another elderly person at this other location was scammed out of over $50,000. So I want to really compliment our, our team for what they're doing, is fine, trying to educate the elderly and not become victims, and to contact us because we're here to help. But I really want to hand it to just two staff members that took the, the, the really ownership of bringing forward a huge issue and addressing that to, to really stop this, and, and really at the lieutenant level, which is their jobs, because they're the future of our agency. I, I'd want to also just highlight 6,698 calls for service last month, month of April, or I should say June, no, April, sorry about that. 3,733 officer-initiated calls, a total of 395 arrests, and 1,205 reports. I do want to also talk about a monumental move for us. When I first came back, the last day of '17, we had 4,000 followers on Instagram. This last weekend, we broke over 30,000. So I'd say that our engagement in the community is really moving forward, and again, thank you for letting me do my job. That's my report.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
In all due respect.
Yes.
They're mobile home parks, not trailer parks.
Yeah.
Probably just saved you about 200 calls.
Yeah, I, you know, I sincerely appreciate that, I really do. And I told the chief I'd warm them all up for you, so I just have done my job. So anyway, thank you for calling out to my attention, my bad, my apologies, I didn't even want to offend anyone.
I think there's a comment that also want to be...
Councilmember Carla Perez?
And you almost lost about 10,000 followers as well. I've said it to you before, and I am glad that you brought that up, but, you know, your team's doing a great job on your social media page of, you know, keeping the community informed, and they're doing it in a great manner.
I appreciate that, thank you. I'll pass that along to them, it's all them, so thank you.
I have one, one other comment. I appreciate, you know, all the work that the police department is doing on the scam that, that is going on towards a lot of our seniors. We need to do more of an awareness, so this way they know that they can call here, because, you know, anytime they see a senior, they automatically, you know, someone's calling, they're calling from another country, or they're calling somewhere, and, and seniors, you know, panic, and, and they think, well, gee, you know, is it, is it real? And, you know, they end up paying X amount of dollars, so if we can do some kind of a promotion in terms of the future, letting them know that they can call the police department to verify whether that scam or not artist that is calling, you know, so that would be nice.
We'll take care of that, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I, I have the fire chief, Brian Park.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on with what Councilmember Perez said, as it's getting hotter, it's going to be in the high 80s, 90s next few days, hydration, shade, you know, and with our weed abatement efforts, home hardening, defensible space, you know, there's a 2,000-acre fire ripping through Apple Valley right now, they're losing outbuildings. That fire, you know, doubled in size in the first 10 minutes, so, you know, do what you can out there with the defensible space at your homes, you know, weed abatement, we've just sent out the second round of notices, so we expect all of our weed abatement completed here in the next few weeks. Thank you for bringing up the, the cooling centers, and Cynthia, thank you, your staff for all the work they do. Just also want to thank Director Kurian and her team. Fire Department's done nine recruitments in six months, and it is a heavy lift from the time you recruit to test, to onboard, and it's a non-stop effort with her short staff, and, you know, our team gets to reap the benefits of that, but, you know, we get to see under the hood and really what goes into that with the entire city staff to get our folks on-boarded, so I just want to say thank you to your staff, and just, you know, tell everyone to stay cool and stay hydrated. Thank you.
Okay, I just have a comment or a question in reference to the Fourth of July. I know that a lot of people are very much concerned with the Fourth of July coming before us. Is there anything that we're doing to do a lot of the preventive in terms of it not only illegal fireworks, but also preventive of any fires that may be started by those illegal fireworks?
Yeah, so a few things. Education outreach, we continue to do, we have the fireworks app that most of the counties followed our lead on that with being able to report app even through the My Rialto app. We also have a dedicated QR code for that, so we get to see all of the locations, people get to apply anonymously. It becomes a lot more relevant between the 27th and the 5th, when we have the highest incidence of 911 calls for fireworks. Over the past two years, we cut down on 80% of the 911 calls using the app, so it's a big difference between the Fourth of July, when you get to sit on hold with someone having a heart attack for 10 minutes with the dispatcher, versus being able to collect that data in a geo-validated space on a map, and our folks, our PD law, we get to have that common operating picture we share to go out and patrol the hazard areas from last year, and to be able to get our folks out there without tying up the 911 system. So the technology we're using, the forward-thinking controls we're using with our police department, weed abatement, outreach, and that's really made a difference in the damage we've seen. You know, can't control how much fireworks go up in the air, we don't like it either, but I'll tell you, we've had the least amount of damage as a result of illegal fireworks over the past years as we have on, on record, due to the great work our public works teams doing with weed abatement help, our vendors, our contractors, the education, our outreach our folks are doing in our mobile home parks is amazing with ready, set, go program, so it really does come down to outreach and communication, so thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Public Works, our director, and also the assistant city manager. But before you start, I just want to compliment Public Works for a lot of the good work that they've done. I've gotten some calls from individuals that said that they needed their sidewalks done, they didn't have a sidewalk, and they were doing them in other blocks. Public Works responded. I passed by there, their sidewalks have been put in place right now, so thank you very much for reacting and, and taking care of our community. So with that, I call on Tim Sullivan to do, give us a report.
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to wish all the fathers out there Happy Father's Day this Sunday, so, other than that, I'll keep it short.
Thank you. Our, our director of community development, Christina Taylor?
Thank you, mayor. Just, real quick, I am working on formatting the project list, emailed it out to you all an initial look at what the Development Review Committee has previewed for the month of May. I have hard copies available if anyone is interested and prefers that, but I am interested in your feedback and what would make that more meaningful, meaningful for you guys to utilize, so that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Christina. Next, I'd like to call on our director of Parks Recreation and Community Service, Cynthia Alvarado Crawford.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. Here's what's going on in Rialto. Fun in the Sun's Senior Summer Camp is happening every Wednesday in June at the Grace Vargas Senior Center from 1:30 to 5:00 p.m. The Sixth Annual Men's Health Fair will be this Wednesday, June 11th, at Rialto Farmer's Market from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Movies in the Park will be this Friday, June 13th, at Floris Park. Fun starts at 6:00 p.m., we'll be showing Inside Out 2. The Teen Center Summer Kickoff Party will be this Saturday, June 14th, at Tom Sawyer Swimming Pool from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Our Little Tots Variety Sports Program will begin Saturday, June 14th, at Carl Johnson Center from 8, we have two sessions, 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. The Department of Adult and Aging Services Bus Distribution will be on Wednesday, June 18th, at the Grace Vargas Senior Center from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. Our Feeding America Senior Mobile Food Pantry Distribution will be Wednesday, June 18th, at Grace Vargas from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Rialto Juneteenth Jam will be Thursday, June 19th, at Ferguson Park from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. Movies in the Park will be Friday, June 20th, at Margaret Todd, fun starts at 6:00, we'll be showing Sonic 3. Fall Season Volleyball Registration will open Monday, July 14th, online and in person. Registration opens up at 7:00 a.m. And then for our youth basketball registration program, we're going to be trying something a little bit new to kind of mitigate some of our parents' concerns in regards to registration and how the teams are put together. So registration will be done right after assessments in August. Assessments start August 11th, makeup day will be on Saturday, so if you don't show up for assessments, you don't get to register for the program. So hopefully, as we build these teams, we will have a better outcome for a, a much more balanced, more competitive season, so we shall see, cross your fingers and hope that it's okay.
Is there an age requirement? Because Ed Scott said he wanted to sign up for the basketball.
I got you. I got coaching spots open, too, you want to go?
No.
Oh, come on! Well, I'll see what I can do, mayor.
But Park will do it.
Parker's coaching?
Parker's coaching.
Perfect. So anyway, so we're, you know, we're, youth sports is, is a challenge, and we're trying to, you know, figure out how to reach a happy balance, so we'll probably see this continue to change a couple more times, but that's just our effort, trying to figure things out and just, you know, make it balanced so that it can be competitive all the way around, so, great. And those are my announcements.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on our director of finance, Scott William.
No report.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on our director of Human Resources, Shama.
Nothing to, nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, and I don't know, I don't see John, is John around? If not, that concludes from utilities, that concludes the reports.
How about Sly? Do you need a report, Sly? Jesus.
Oh, if, okay, if not, I'd like to echo what Tim Sullivan said, and that's to all the fathers that are here, Happy Father's Day to all of you, as you celebrate Father's Day, have a safe one and a good one, and enjoy it, and then we thank the Lord for giving us an opportunity to celebrate with our families. Those of us that can get together with families. And with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Carla Perez to adjourn.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Edward Montoya. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none? Councils adjourn.